This is your last one.
Yes.
All right, it is 10:30, Monday morning, July the 11th. The Michigan Court's going to go into a budget workshop. Let the record show Larry Hulsey, John Curtis Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, Don Krantz are all present for this workshop. Brian, this will return it back over to you.
Yes, sir. As the judge said, this is just our initial first shot across the bow, so to speak. This is...
Seat belts yourself in, don't fall out of chair.
Correct. This is just to let you know where we were and what we have as far as when we had our meetings. If you'll first turn to the Capitol Outlay Request, you'll see that these are the requests that have been made by the various departments. Emergency Management, since we have re-instituted that department, they have requested two items there. A brand-new truck slash command vehicle for emergency management, and then they wanted a radio to go instead of truck. So that particular department is requesting $56,000 for those two items. The Treasurer is requesting a laser color printer, and then three 27-inch computer monitors for a grand total of $2,500. The Tax Assessor is requesting carpet and flooring, carpet and/or flooring behind her counter and in those two offices, and then some security enhancements for her office. Both of those are TBD. Don't really have an idea what those costs are, so there's really nothing I can budget for at this moment in time for that, but I think as we go through along the way, we'll get some bids on some new carpet or maybe some flooring or something behind the counter there. The District Clerk has requested a laser jet printer. This is a, with the advent of the new system, they're doing upgrades to their birth certificate system. It's switching from the old dot matrix printer. Now they have to have a laser jet printer to print these certificates off. So she's asking for a laser jet printer. She's also asking for a new laptop, $650 estimate for the computer that she takes for county court. And she's also asking for a lateral file cabinet that she's running out of room in one of her offices. So a grand total of $2,150. The JP's Office, along with the Tax Assessor Collector, are also asking for security enhancements. Again, don't know the parameters or what they're exactly looking for, but we've just kind of, we've made that list so that we would make that request known to you gentlemen.
And so were the District County Clerk, sorry, I don't mean interrupt.
Correct.
She's had the same concerns JP's and Tax Assessor had.
Elections is asking for an office chair, $300. The Extension Office, AgriLife, they're asking for three items. The first two, which is an HPZ notebook and the HD format projector, those are both cost shared, meaning that AgriLife will pay half. So those prices you see there are our half for the contribution of those. We get the asset when it's used up, and of course, that gets to use it the whole time in our county, but AgriLife will pick up half of the cost of those two things. And then he's also asking for a cart slash dolly that holds the projector up also if they have things delivered. It can also be a two-wheel dolly to pull things in. The Sheriff's Office is asking for, to replace the HVAC units on the jail. That's $22,000. They asked for some ventilation system for the evidence room. They're saying that with the amount of drugs that are coming in, that the smell is wafting out into the offices, and so they're asking for a separate ventilation system out of that room. We have the third of five TASER payments that are in there. He's also requesting five additional TASERS. One for the jail, jailers' use, two more for the SRO officers that are coming on. I have all of that information here. Four rifles for the SRO officers. The school is providing a gun safe for them, but they're asking for four rifles so that they can be located at the school campuses. They're also asking to trade in their existing .4 cal pistols that they're carrying in exchange for Glock 9mm. The reasoning behind that, they say, is that the ammunition is cheaper, and secondly, that it's not as destructive ammunition when they're shooting, that the guns that they're shooting now can do a whole lot of damage if it misses its target, and the 9mm don't do as much damage. Their words, not mine. But the net with the trade-in would be $6,500. And then, of course, the three, four vehicles, the $135,000, which this court already approved, that will be coming out of the next year's budget.
What about the software that we approved also? Will that be somewhere else on down the road?
No, that actually needs to be added to this.
Is that the Zerker software?
I had that note, but I forgot that, I'm sorry.
Because that's like $150,000, $160,000.
$160,000 there.
Back to the Glock, how many were talking about? You know, I think I got that in here. You got it?
I've got his original papers.
Exactly.
For his discussion. I just have to back into the number. He says 14,000.
I didn't care if you know. Here we go, Brian.
I don't see a number.
Buy a pistol back 250 would be 7,500, so maybe we divide 7,500 by 250, what's that one got to be? I don't remember that being. At the end, we're talking about 30 guns, or what are we talking about? It's a bonus, it's a 30, 35. Hang on just a second. Here you go, prayer.
What do you need, a calculator?
I'm looking for it. There it is.
Supposedly, they think they can get 7,500 back.
250.
250. Yeah, it's 30 right on the head. There's 30 weapons.
And then we'll need to add the Zerker software to this list.
Sorry about that.
No, thank you. I had a note, and obviously, I didn't look at that when I finished up.
And that's an annual payment thing, right?
No, sir, that is part of our initial purchase. If you remember, when we purchased the Zerker software, there was a down payment, and then we were postponing until delivery, and then they turned it on, and I was going to be in this next.
I thought it was going to be close to $200,000.
Yeah, you're probably right, because this is about 370, 380 all total, and I think we put down, what, 160, 150? We have to look back on that.
I've got a copy of the contract.
So you're probably right, it probably is going to be close to 200 at the end of the day, once they go live.
And then it's so much a month or a year.
It's an annual maintenance agreement. However, their maintenance agreement is less than the net data that we're paying for. And I've got that renewal here, too.
We'll take about three folks out, and we'll put one contract in. So we're adding another 200 to this?
To the Sheriff's Office, yes, sir.
I told you to put your seat belts on, didn't I? Set tight.
Fire Department, they're requesting a new fire engine. Estimates, current today costing is $555,000. $18,000 brush equipment. They want the second generator. Last year, they had requested two, they got approval for one, so now they're asking for the second one, $9,000. Continuation of replacement of SCBA equipment, $36,000. New helmets, $12,000, and to expand the storage area of the building, $9,000.
And this is probably not time to bring it up, because it's cut it down in half. Engine for $555,000, you're looking at like two-year term, or are you looking at three?
I'm thinking probably three. I would, you know, as we do our trimming, I would probably suggest that we keep it the same as the ladder truck payment was. What one of the options would be, it's twofold, basically, you know, that we go ahead and budget for it, much like we do the golf course and things like that, and we actually transfer that to a tax pool and let that over the course of two or three years accumulate. And then, secondly, you know, the Fire Department does collect donations from the residents. You know, we need to maybe partake in some of that. That doesn't come to the county. That all goes to their volunteer account. You know, either we do some revenue sharing, matching grant...
I can see behind you, you can't. Sorry, I need a big mirror up here.
What's that?
No.
Somebody getting killed back there?
Not yet.
You know, revenue share, maybe that's where the helmets go, something like that to have the...
I think that he, excuse me, I think you do buy stuff with money, don't you?
We use a lot of that money for county equipment.
That's what I was thinking.
It mainly supports the volunteers paying for their Christmas banquet, buying food, that we front the money on food and stuff, and then we get reimbursed on the county on some of the other than training. But we, you know, if we get it too high, then we'll use that money, like we use some of it toward the hovercraft, we use some of it for one of the brush trucks.
The Roden Bridge, they requested two Swenson tailgate sand spreaders. They're asking for a new truck for the mowing department.
This is all going to change, yeah?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Chevy four-by-four half-ton truck, and then a Ford dump truck. The Expo Center is asking for a stall vacuum.
Oh, dump truck, yeah, I need it on top of my...
Expo's asking for a stall vacuum, and then some of the security cameras that we removed from the security bid, $48,000. Golf course maintenance. Jeff is asking for a new pump station for the Lakes Course. We have a number of estimates here, but I'm trying to go worst-case scenario here, $215,000. He's asking to rebuild the maintenance wellhouse for $2,000, and he's got some lovely pictures, if you're interested in looking at the pictures of what he's wanting to do, or what he's wanting to replace. The tri-toe trailer, $3,500, a portable generator for $1,500, two backpack blowers, $800. He's asking for a TV that's internet Bluetooth-enabled, so he can do training with his men, $1,200. A John boat with trailer, an electric mower, motor, $3,000. And I have a question about this NSN contract renewal. We've been having these every year, but he did not submit it, so I need to verify if this is not something he needs anymore. The Pro Shop, every year, they request for new carpet in the Pro Shop. He's requested for freezer, scoreboards. I've put in there 10 new carts, and we'll explain that a little bit, and of course, we have the final golf cart payment. In our discussions with Duff, he was already laying the groundwork for a complete fleet replacement of golf carts, which I questioned, because when we looked at these carts, if this court remembers, we were anticipating a good eight years minimum with the lack of this fleet. And so I was hesitant to even explore this, and I certainly did not want to come back to the court with a $600,000 purchase of additional fleet golf carts.
Thank you.
And, you know, during the year, we have some tournaments that do require the rental, a short-term rental of additional carts to our fleet. So one of the, one of the options that I'm proposing here is that we budget to purchase 10 carts, probably sometime around March, which is right as our busy season. So as we're going through these big tournaments, our fleet increases from 120 to 130. Then, by the time we get down to the end of July, when our, when our, the heat and things like that, our play is dropping off, then the maintenance department would then cull out five carts, maybe, that are maybe our worst performers, and then we sell those individually. There's always a ready market for gas carts, and with the neighborhoods within 100 miles of here, I think they, a ad on Craigslist, or eBay, or whatever, for a well-maintained gas cart, and then that way, we've netted, our fleet has now netted 125. I think we could probably get about $3,500 a cart selling these gas carts. And then the following year, we do the same thing. We bring in another 10, and we then start weeding out our herd, so that we're never having to sit there and look at the prospect of buying 120 again in our lives. So, and then we always have these new carts being intermixed into our fleet. So...
What year are we into these carts?
This is, this will be year five.
I mean, it's supposed to be about like seven.
But, remember, the, you know, these aren't the electric ones, and I was assured by everybody from Yamaha on down to our employees, that the useful expected life of these carts were eight-plus years. So I'm holding them to that. I'm not interested in replacing the fleet simply because it's 12 tons. You know, yes, we have wear on them, yes, we have to replace tires, or windshields, but that's with use, and so, you know, I'm, again, but anyway, that's my, that's my two cents on that one.
We're talking about $6,000 apiece?
And that could be worst case. We purchased the other ones for $4,900. In fact, $4,950 is what we purchased the other carts for five years ago. I haven't even taken the step to get a price on 10. Certainly, I wouldn't get as good a price as I was getting with 120, but I'm thinking that six should probably, should do it. And then, of course, this doesn't even anticipate the $3,000 to $3,500 that I think I can achieve by selling the five coming back, so...
Those carts that we, that large bunch we bought, we haven't had those for a year yet.
We're entering year five, yes, sir. We're entering year five. This is the, this is the fifth payment, and yes, sir. And so that's, that's again why I was, I was reluctant, and I think the judge can tell I was a little stronger than reluctant. I, you know, there was just no way.
You insulted one person.
Yes, sir, I did. But there's just no way that we could...
What was the reasoning, the process?
Time, and that they're having...
Especially when we went with gas carts, because it's going to last long enough.
I agree with you.
Long enough.
Wear, tires, and, you know, and I'm, that didn't really make much of a difference to me. I mean, I can understand that some have, have been flipped, some have had some, some have run into the lake, you know, so that's why I think we could probably call out five to sell. And, you know, the cost savings there would be the money I get back from selling them, and I don't have to rent any during our busy season.
Yep.
So, anyway, just to submission. 448, we're still working with Eddie, but I did want to go ahead and put some numbers down into his department for IT, if you remember, Eddie just came on board June 1. So wanted to go ahead, basically, as a, as a play saver, to, because I know we're going to have some additional expenses, now that we have our, we're hosting our own network again, not in the data center, so we're going to, and there may be some things he doesn't know that he doesn't know that he's going to need. So I just didn't want to be stuck with, with nothing there. I'd rather come back with cuts than to have to come back with increases. Okay? Now, if you'll switch over to the other report, we can kind of go through this, and again, I'll, I'll tell you that I have not changed anything in relation to salary, and/or the added personnel that have come through the request. I have asked the Treasurer to, so after we went through the salary survey, and there was such a big jump that had to be made, a couple of you came to me individually and said, "There has to be a better way to do this, that there needs to be some sort of a COLA, or some sort of an adjustment that we can make small along the way." So I turned to the Social Security to see what they're doing. Starting January 1 of this year, 2018, Social Security did a COLA of 2%. Obviously, you know, they follow a, a calendar year, so that would be my recommendation, just as a starting number, and so I've asked the Treasurer to rework our step-and-grade system, assuming a 2% change, so that it just simply, the level of the, of the bay goes up 2%. And that takes care of employees. If you also want me to factor that 2% at an elected official level, we can do that as well, but, you know, right now, I'm only asking to look at that on a per-employee basis, and we have not dropped those numbers in there yet, okay? The other thing that I will tell you that I've also done is, when we look at this, is TCDRS. Finally, some good news that has come down for us. If you remember correctly, our rate currently is the 15.92%, making up for some losses in the retirement account, and also for some adjustments that we've made. We've been notified that starting in January of 2019, that our rate will drop to 15.44%. So finally, we're seeing an arch. However, I'm recommending to this group that since we are currently paying a blended rate of 15.79 this budget year, that we maintain that, simply because that will help push down that unfunded pension amount that we have on our books. It's already something we've budgeted, it's already something we're, we're irked with dealing with, and it's, and I've run the long-term projections, and it really does make a difference on our unfunded pension liability and gets us in a better spot.
And we talk about this every year. The buybacks hurt us to a degree several years ago, they allowed people to buy back in, and we're still making up for that.
Correct. You know, and, and, yeah, we do nothing on cost of living, but the next change that I'll float out to you, and it's, it's a costly change, of course, nothing's costly in standpoint of TCDRS, we're all, because they say, "Oh, it doesn't cost anything now, it'll just cost us the next 20 years."
It's like a house loan.
Is, our, our plan does not allow for a lump sum distribution upon retirement. And a lot of counties are looking at that, making that election. You know, it really is something I think we need to consider, given the age of our retirees. This will allow them to, you know, with our retirees, if they've been here a long time, their options of retirement are whether you get the different selections for your life, your spouse's life, or guaranteed 10 years, or whatever. You know, if you're in, if you're, say, in your 70s, or beyond, you know, none of those, none of those options are really particularly attractive, especially if you're wanting to leave some of this to your heirs. But a partial lump sum distribution will allow that, because then you could take that lump sum and roll it over to an IRA account, and therefore leave it to your heirs, where, you know, if you, if you pulled an option that didn't really work out, or max 10 years, I mean, you know, if you've worked for the county 30 years, you know, that 10-year option really isn't going to, that 10-year guarantee is really not going to make a whole lot of difference. So it's just something to consider. It's not a change I'm asking for this year, because it will affect our rate, but two or three years down the road from here, it's something that I'll bring back.
Would that be like a partial payout, like you get a certain amount a month, but then you also get a certain amount upfront?
Yes, sir. Because that, that partial lump sum, if I'm not mistaken, I...
Is that just your money?
I, I think it's the money that has been put in. It's not the county's money.
The retirement check, which will be coming from the money...
Just a smaller amount.
Okay.
But you'll, you know, be able to take out, you know, $100,000 and put it into an IRA or something.
So that's an acceptable method with, with the retirement system.
Yes, sir, it's, it's an option. It certainly is an option. We've just, we've just always said no, and...
And they even, on their side, they have it there. It just says, "On our particular, if we just don't offer," it says, "Not offered."
Absolutely. And a lot of counties have been doing some, I'd say a lot. I've, I've been talking with three that have made that change this year, and, you know, and the whole rationale behind it is exactly the same for mine, is their aging workforce, you know, being, you know, it's not unusual to have somebody in their 70s or beyond still, still working or serving in elected capacity, and, you know, this makes it a little bit more...
Well, right now, our best option is a 10-year, right?
That's correct. 10-year guarantee.
That lump out looks pretty good, doesn't it?
Yeah, that lump sum, it looks real good.
You know, so it's, it's certainly an option that we can consider, again, something that we could do for our employees that won't necessarily cost a whole heck of a lot. So those are the things I try to look forward to.
And excuse me, Ignorance, how's that help us in the long term as far as funding? Because it's already funded, so how does that work for us in the long term? It won't impact any of that.
No, sir. Because what, what they take out is...
Is their money.
Is their money.
We're funding long-term retirements.
It may help in, in, like, retire earlier.
Go ahead and get out.
It might, it might. You know, it's, you know, it's certainly, it's just another option. It's another option. Now, if you'll look, starting with the transfer station, we have got, back this out just a little bit. If you'll see, the first column is what I'm, what we have right now proposing for the coming year. The second column is the original budget that was approved by this court. The third column is the amended budget, the, basically, the net after all the budget transfers that we did. The fourth column is the year-to-date results this year through the end of May, and then the next two columns are the, the annual, the actual end-of-the-year results for the previous few years. Sorry for those in the gallery, if I, if I expand it out, it will be absolutely useless for you to see all those columns, so I'll just concentrate on the three columns there. And then I'll identify anything that, that really we can maybe talk about here that might need to be. Transfer station, I'm leaving, we really, you know, we've changed the direction of what that transfer station is as far as charging. We've got an early indication of what last month's collections to the county will be, and that was...
A little bit north, 5,700.
5,700 for the month coming in.
Checks should be to you, hopefully, the next year or two.
Perfect. So we'll be able to see how that levels out through the rest of the year. Certainly, we have another line item. I have seen, however, that the, the fuel expense for the month of May decreased significantly compared to the previous months. It dropped about 25% so, for that tub grinder. So that, you know, we are achieving the desired results of what we're looking for there. Library, Peggy has asked for a $1,000 increase on her, her books purchases from $20,000 We did, we, that's pretty much the only big change that she had there. Building maintenance, and again, these are all net of any type of changes to salaries.
Hang on just a second, I, we got a question from the gallery, as you call them.
Yes.
Do you ever make a decision on the genealogy or the ancestry?
Sarah, or someone's going to look into that for us.
I've got that actually in the genealogy budget. I've got that in the genealogy budget. Building maintenance, nothing really changed there, too much consequence, as you can see. Emergency management, we're, one of the proposals that was done on emergency management was to actually put the payroll into the Fire Department, since Brian kind of serves two roles as an Assistant Chief and as the Emergency Management Coordinator. So with a clear understanding that even though he is Assistant Chief, he answers to the county judge, but we moved his payroll into 429, the Fire Department, but we left these items that are clear emergency management expenses for those type of things. But we left these items that are clear emergency management expenses for those type of things. The $5200 for dues and publications is 5,000 for COG. COG is charging us 5,000 for our Emergency Management Department, basically. So-
And we've been getting it for, what, how many years now?
Yeah, a lot. We've never paid it before, but they're, they're popping us.
What do we get for that 5,000?
Your guess is as good as mine, sir.
Brian, do you want to go into that? I've got a list. I should've brought that with me. I can email that list to you.
But we do get something in the-
We had a major incident here in the director's staff. They'll send people down to help run the EOC or the POC sides and things like that.
And no disrespect to our previous folks, but until we had Dwayne and Brian in these places, it never was really utilized like it should've been. So we never paid that 5,000. Walter didn't, Mike didn't. Now we're in a position where we're actually utilizing the situation. Dwayne and Brian are using them. And as we're using them, they're beginning to wonder where the money's at.
And how did you develop the town that our district that wasn't paying?
Yes.
Can they, can they let us know about that?
Yes.
If we get some money from the plant for emergency-
Yes, 50,000.
Could we use that for this furniture equipment?
Absolutely. The plant, the plant has made very clear to us that they really don't want to get into the nuts and bolts, as long as it has an emergency management connection, they're fine.
Yes, and they have no, no discretion.
Audits Department, we've kept everything the same. Treasurer, with the, we had to go up on computer maintenance. Again, we got our renewal from Net Data, so we're working through that. And then her particular two requests for the monitors and the color printer. Tax Assessor Collector, we, she made a request for her seminar expense to be increased from the 3,200 to 3,800. And we've gone down on her telephone expense. And then, and then this computer maintenance of 1,750, that is for that third station that we lease from Tech stock, that according to, to our tax assessor has proved invaluable at certain times. Haven't gotten the final number yet from CAD on their budget yet, so I've still got that plugged at 195, 600.
That may be my fault. I might have everything to choose.
County Attorney, we were able to, he had requested some changes, and his primarily went, went down. And primarily in the outside expense, went from 12,000 down to 7,500. And, but his computer maintenance went up for his particular modules that, that he utilizes through his office. Non-department, everything kind of stayed the same, with the exception of MHMR. We have removed that funding, which was 13,200. County Judge, everything stayed the same.
Good name.
Yeah. Good to know. Clerk's Office, we, there were a couple of changes that were requested by Michelle, primarily in records management. She requested an increase from 25,000 to 36,000. And she also requested a large increase on printing. The state has pushed down a new requirement that is kind of double fun, double-bladed in this, that these birth certificates and death certificates all have to be printed on this special paper. And this special paper has to already be pre-printed, and it only can be purchased from one source. And so-
It's another state judge.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out who's brother-in-law of the paper company, but, but it all has to be done. And, and part of the security is that they supposedly destroyed the template after they print our order. And so every time you reorder, you have to pay for this template to be redesigned again.
500 bucks for each template.
Which I'm sure they go back into the locking Ziploc security cabinets to get the one that they said they destroyed, and this charge is 500.
Does she get reimbursed for anything like that?
No, sir. No, sir.
Unfunded mandate.
Not only that, the Clerk's Association is really fighting, you know, pay attention at your conferences, because the state is now wanting to take our records and sell them. So our county records, you know, part of this beam online, so now the next step is the state wants to then sell those records. So our county real estate records and things like that, and it's gonna turn into a money stream for the state. And, you know, our, or, and as well as our position is that those belong to our taxpayers. And, but I doubt we'll lose, I doubt we'll win that battle. But judicial judges stayed the same. JP, nothing really much changed there, with the exception of the, had no particular equipment number there, but that's because they're asking for some security enhancements, and we don't know a number yet. Constables went down. And I will tell you that the, there were a couple of changes on the clerk and the judge I had to put in there as well, as for Precinct 2 and Precinct 4, money for bonds. I need to do, I think I'll put that in there. And also on the Tax Assessor Collector, she brought up an interesting issue. She is requesting for her deputy to be bonded. And she can, she can enlighten you a little bit more, but supposedly, under the Constitution, if, if she, if something were to happen to her demise, and, and we lost our Tax Assessor Collector, we could not collect taxes until a replacement was appointed and bonded. So by having the deputy bonded would allow that office a continuation plan. So she is requesting for her deputy to also be bonded to meet the state statutes.
Did y'all ever figure out if it's gonna be year by year, or term by term, or how did y'all-
I think you have prices on both, but there's something else I had to bring up on the bonds side. It says that my bonds in the county should be, I think it's 10% of the net taxes collected last year. I don't collect property taxes, but I do collect a lot of fees that I think the 5,000's probably not enough. And I did a survey with some counties that don't collect, and most of them are doing the max, which is 100,000. I was gonna give prices on that, too. Just something to think about.
Jury Court Coordinator, we've got that. Point of attorney, we've, we've maintained at 60,000.
They're lucky there.
Juvenile probation, we're, we're really having a very fortunate year. You know, juvenile probation is one of those that's like autopsies, you really never know how to plan for that. But I'll tell you that we've, we've had a very fortunate year. We do, however, have to keep funding up to maintain our, our amount of contributions for, to get the state funding. Adult probation, again, we've kept everything the same. We're charging half of James Allen's salary to the adult probation. This was a change down. County Attorney took us from the law library from 19,000 to 9,000. Figured a less in-form citizenry is better, I guess. Now, he's just been able to rework the subscriptions and, and get, get us away from actual paper books and more electronic. The Committee on Aging has requested an increase of $10,000 from 252.8 to 262.8 in response to continuation of decreased funding from state levels. And so she's asking. Elections, one of the changes here that we've made, probably the biggest change, not was banning the $300 office chair, was, if you remember, in prior years, the assistant's salary was split 85% to elections and 15% to commissioners. And the, the judge and I, in consultation with others, thought it'd be best to move that assistant out of the commissioner's office and assign her directly into elections. So now elections is going to have, obviously, an increased expense for taking 100% of that salary, but the corresponding reduction at the commissioner's office level. Child welfare being the same. Personnel Director, we, we had some cost savings there. Extension office, everything pretty much stayed the same there, with the exception of his equipment request that we talked about, to which we're cost share through RAG-LI.
You said those numbers reflected the, only our portion?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Historical Commission, kept, kept that same, for required by state statute, you can have a historical commission. State offices stayed the same for the game wardens and GPS troopers. The Sheriff's Office has requested an increase in training from 25,000 to 28,000, in anticipation of having the new SROs that we need to do additional training.
I know you didn't have time to let this go around, Brian, but we discussed, and we ended up, we put it to bed, on how we're gonna break out the employees as far as the line items with employee versus the amount, where we can see, not just in the sheriff's office, but everybody's office. I know it's gonna link to this.
It, it will be a, a, a separate schedule behind it.
Cool.
So it'll, what, and what the judge is talking about is, we will have amounts that will be associated with actual employee positions.
Right. It won't have names, but it'll be like, you know, whatever you'll call it, deputy investigator or card one, card two.
And so you will see what makes up those numbers.
Instead of when you see just 12, you'll actually be able to go see where 12 is going.
So it'll be, it'll be a subsidiary schedule behind it. I had to increase their insurance a little bit for their property insurance. I was able to take a little bit of reduction off their utilities from 65 to 60. But as we discussed, I need to add the surfer onto there. 429, which is the Fire and EMS, like we discussed, this is that new position that we took there and added. I put the Fire Assistant Chief slash EMC with code number 429102. Roof Department, one of the things I had worked and discussed with Brady, and you're gonna see in the final budget, I left it because we haven't dealt with anything payroll-wise, is we're going to shrink this. I asked, why do we have line items for road maintenance in Precincts 1 and 3, and then Precincts 2 and 4? Because we're on a unit system, I asked him if there were employees that only worked for Precincts 1 and 3, and he said, "No, they worked on whatever needed." So this budget became way too cumbersome. So we can, we can shrink this up to have road employees, and then we can also have the mowing crew, utility people, or we can have just one line item, whichever you prefer on that. So-
Yeah, because it's confusing when you look at it.
It just narrows change.
Right. You would, you would think you had 16 employees, you had six dealing with 16.
So what, what, what would your recommendation be? One line, two lines?
Right. Oh, yeah.
We'll, we'll keep out the welder, keep out the sign, and, and that, that type. I'm primarily meaning the-
Well, we got mechanics, and we got road, and we got mowing crew.
Mowing.
So it'll be at least three, probably.
Right. Well, and we'll keep the welder out, welding line item for, for that one, and then the signs line item. But yeah, so I'll, I'll keep the mowing crew separate from the roadhands. And, but what will be gone will be all that Precinct 1 and 3, Precinct 2 and 4. Part-time for each one of those precincts. I mean, we'll just have one part-time line. Be a little, little bit easier to track some of that. It's just one of those things, I think, that's just carried over with time, and we can clean this up a little bit. You saw the, the requests that were made there for his fixed assets. Precinct, the commissioners, the, all of the commissioners-
Precinct 1, 2.
All the commissioners are the same, with the exception of Precincts 2 and 4, we increased the seminar expense, and also put a, an amount in there for a bond. And then, as you know, Precinct 2, road materials is at 105, where the other three precincts are at 80. Commissioner's Office, nothing really significantly changed there, except, the exception of the before-mentioned taking the secretary's 15% off of that department. Constable 2, exactly identical to Constable 1. Landscaping, kind of different change here, reduced that. I did make a salary change there, reduced it down to just one employee at the top. Removed all of the part-time, little big token amount for premium pay. And then I created a line item down in line number 443414, called Outside Services, for 50,000, which is the, the outside mowing company that we hired. I also, with Brady's help, we kind of estimated down things like repair parts and supplies. The landscaping dropped from 8,500 to 4,000. We kept the chemicals and fertilizer the same, but we did reduce gas and oil from 4,500 down to 2250, you know, in anticipation of not needing, if we're not working as, as many pieces of equipment, hopefully we'll do-
That should be, should be better than that.
Exactly. And, and, you know, this is a, this is a, an estimate, obviously, there. Genealogy, like Paula mentioned, the only real significant change there is that I put 1,500 under dues and subscriptions. They are requesting a, a bulk government subscription to accessory.com, so that residents can come in and, instead of buying their own subscription, they can come in and utilize our system to find out that they're, you know, to what school rules they're related to in history or whatever. I'm quite afraid to check through mine arm, so, anyway. Even with putting that 1,500 in there, we do, you'll see that the total expense dropped from last year, 4870 to 3850, simply because we no longer have that building across the way, so I don't have any utility expense, you know, don't have any insurance expense for them. Really, could, they just have a phone that's there. And I probably could even get down with building repairs, although I kept money in there for their little area in case something damaged inside their area would be fair to charge Peggy for that. So, anyway, so their budget has now dropped to 3850 with that subscription, should you choose to, to authorize them to do that.
Do they get donations of any kind if we get 50/50?
Very few donations come from here.
Maybe just the director.
So we dropped it around 5,000, a little less than 17.
Oh, yeah.
And quite a bit since 16. Where'd it spend all that on 16? Roof or something?
Lots of, lots of bullet paper, paper towels. We had a building, we had- Lots of, lots of wallpaper, paper towels, we had a building, we had...
Six thousand copies a month.
Yes.
We had trimmed that one at 14.
Yes, sir, that was a good move.
And getting rid of the buildings also helped.
First of many, hopefully.
Computer, excuse me, community center, utilities, I had to go up quite a bit on that. If you can see, we had 3750 budgeted, and our utilities are coming up much higher than that. I don't know if it's people running the air conditioner keeping the doors open at the community center or what, but you can see that our through May 31st number is at 3478, and we still have the rest of this budget year to go. And we had, and this number, the 3478, does not even take into account hottest part of summer.
Well, the actual 17 and 16 wasn't near that.
Correct, well, we had 3886 and 16, 3383, so I mean, it does vary, obviously, with use.
And this is probably not a fair question on the spot. Did we know what we're bringing in on that building that we're charging for?
How do you think so?
How are we offsetting our expenses, are we?
It all goes into our rent line item. We would have to break that out, you know, certainly.
I was just wondering, because I know we're using it a lot more, even though we start charging for it, it gets used every weekend.
It is used more, though.
I think in the future, we need to break it out where we can see where we're...
It's amazing.
I know.
I guess it's worth more to them. Now they're going to use AC on there.
Four or five years ago, when the air conditioner wasn't working, it was in July. So that'd be less.
I think they replaced that since I've been here.
And we can create a separate line item on our revenue sheet for rent community center. I mean, it certainly...
Well, I just think it needs to be broke out somewhere where we can see where we stand.
Well, it's a different fee, so I mean, you could go and look at the $25.
True.
I know, but...
It'd be easy to, yes.
And if you were to report on it some way, it'd be easier to break it out.
We need to know, because the budget's now 8,500, and it was 63.
Yeah. And if it gets out of hand, we need to relook at that $25 thing, that fee may need to be adjusted.
Takes a lot of 25s to get to 3,000.
But we need, we need to see what, especially by the end of the year, we need to see...
If it's getting used more, we thought it'd be used less.
I know, you would thought that, but no, she's got it booked up.
So...
I think well into next year.
It's not too high, apparently.
Normal.
No, and I think the, you know, and I think the change that this body approved this morning for the senior citizens building is actually going to drive more business, possibly to the expo, or possibly to the city, to the skating rink building, who knows, but...
I doubt if they just want to clean up.
Well, they want to be able to be in there till midnight.
Some of those parties, they...
For sure.
Yeah.
Some of those parties.
There's a lot more than you think that want to open till midnight.
Well, there's, and they're using...
There's a lot of those type of parties.
For midnight without alcohol?
And they're, and they're using it...
In senetas.
I know, but there's no alcohol.
Well, I think that's part of the problem, too. I think that they've had some law enforcement calls because of some alcohol consumptions in the parking lot and things of that nature, some of those going with late-night parties as well. So I think that may clean up some of that as well. IT, we were able to clean up and streamline some of that. We obviously have our outside services provider taken off in 144 for the data center. I have left the 11,000 on there for email begrudgingly, as he's still sitting, but I can, he knows what I'm talking about, so...
We've had many discussions.
We'll be maybe through some, we'll have some soft email expense through purchasing software, but it's not sustainable to do 11,000 a year for email, so that is, Eddie is working on that. And then again, 8,000 in the 570 account, which as Eddie gets able to go through and make specific recommendations, I expect that number to go down. I'll say it again, I expect that number to go down. Contingency account, I put it at 350,000 as a starting point. We were at 341 last year, and as you can see, we're already down to 168 in using that, so I put it at 350. I've, because of the requests that were noticeable through the conversations in our budget meetings, I've increased the security line item to 50,000. You know, the sad thing about security line is that really would not do, create much for ripple. That stuff's expensive, and I know the...
And you got to manage it.
I know the argument, and I notice that, is how much is one of our employees' life worth, and I know that's, that's not an argument any of us will want to win or quantify. I'm just saying, I don't know how much to put in there, and I don't know what it would cost. And of course, it's, you know, I don't care if you spend $5 million, if someone is determined to sacrifice their own life to create mayhem, they're going to succeed no matter what we have. So, but anyway, I put 50 in there. 95,000 for the land purchase. I know we only owe 90 per the contract, however, we owe plus closing costs, so I put 95 in there. And then we continually do capital improvements for the courthouse annex at 100,000, and so I have left that there to handle for air conditioner replacements, things of that nature that affect this building and the historic courthouse. And then we, last year, we got direction from this body to set the subsidy for the two enterprise funds at 250 apiece. So that means our first run without any type of changes to payroll, 13 million, 291.
About 900,000 up from last year at this time?
Yes, sir.
At this time?
At this time. Now, golf course, you know, I have not done any work on the revenue lines, but you'll see that I have put in the 250. Have not, you can look through those particular departments on the enterprise funds to see the changes that they have requested. Primarily, we've increased rental to 13,000 because Jeff has worked out a deal where we're not buying some of those pieces of equipment that we're actually just renting them, which is saving us long-term, because he's only renting them during the season that he needs them, and then turning them back. And then, of course, the $245,000 in requested improvements there that are on that other sheet. Pro shop, he has requested, not requested, I've increased his credit card fees from 23 to 25,000, just from increased usage. The equipment furniture, that includes at the 17427, that includes the 10 new carts that I've proposed in there. And then the panic, nothing has changed there. We've already purchased his truck, so nothing is necessary there. So total expenditure during now, the golf course on this run is 2 million, 257, 573. Likewise, on the expo center, the only revenue line I've actually filled in is the 250 coming from the general fund. The requested changes here, as you can see, were for his equipment furniture, and then I also had to increase his property insurance line item. His, his insurance bill came in from back at 31,369. So I've proposed on his budget 35,000 for the coming year. He's requested an increase in the amount of outside work for the building cleaning from 13,5 to 18,5. He's requested, he's requested an increase of equipment rental from 5,000 to 20,000. But his budget went from 1 million, 106, down to 9,69, 848, primarily because last year we had that lighting package budget in there, that's not true.
Have we seen any reduction in electrical?
Marginal, not, you know, I mean, the, the, the main issue that I had with the lighting was that they took and were applying that 20, or projected 20% reduction on the total electricity bill, changing only the lights and change air conditioning. So, you know, so the, you know, are we seeing some reduction? Sure. Is it anything we're going to bank for now? Now, to add insult to injury, I know that we always like to do that, we need to look at the, our taxes, where we are with tax. The preliminary numbers that we have gotten from the appraisal district are a taxable value of 2 billion, 208,045, 116. At last year's rate, that equates to a tax levy of 10 million, 192, 115, 45. Last, or our current year, we had a taxable value of 2, 271, 238, 821, which generated a tax levy of 10 million, 438, 1127. So just on our preliminary numbers, we're looking at a reduction of values of 63 million, 193, 705, which equates to 291,696 dollars less money if we, with all things being equal, leaving our tax rate unchanged.
And that's direct to proportions to the power plant.
200 what?
291.
91,000?
696.
696.
300,000.
Yeah.
What is it, 10 million what on this year was proposed?
10 million, 192, 115, 45. Now, I'm not going to be a very popular person in the room for what I'm about to say, but I wanted...
You already have seven people behind you, so it's all right.
What's that?
I think that's anyone, so it's all right. You know, I have a food taster at home, so. I'm going to start off the discussion saying that I'm going to recommend to this body a one-cent increase this year. A one-cent increase does a couple of three things. Number one, we are all aware of the coming legislative session and the challenges that we'll be facing with Senator Beckencourt and his mafia again.
Burdwell, Patrick, and Abbott.
That we are going to have to take a defensive stance. Secondly, with that, you know, just off these preliminary numbers, our effective rate, and you know, I don't want to get lost in the effective rate, but basically the effective rate, you can see last year, or this, this year, the 10 million, 483, 81127, which is mirrored right here, the effective rate basically means how much would it take with these values for us to simply collect what we collected last year? And that actually comes out to 47, 48, 006. So just to keep everything equal, just to keep and to replace, the problem I have with Beckencourt, you know, and nobody enjoys talking about a penny tax increase, and certainly, I would put myself front of the list. You all know that my other life, I invested in real estate, and those things have to be fed with taxes. So a penny is a penny on me too. However, we don't get any credit for the, the good intentions and the good acts that this court does year after year of making it work and just simply stomaching those, those property tax reduction values and keeping the rate the same. Unfortunately, I can't go back and say, well, let's take the, the property value decrease that we had last year and add it to this year and come up with my new effective rate so that I can make it work. The, the effective rate calculation only looks at the prior year. So what happens when next year we have an uptick, we, say this body chooses to not change the tax rate, we, we don't even want to go with that penny. So basically, we just wipe off that 291,000 of tax.
But...
And then next year, the, we do see a little bit of an increase. Hopefully not because of anything I'm building, but we see an increase. Well, we can't go back and say, well, give me that 291 back, the, the calculation says, forget it. You forgave it, it's gone, and we don't get to go back and...
But if there's an increase, you'll have a increase.
No, it's going to force our rate down.
Yeah.
Effective rate.
It'll flip.
It flips. That's what happens. That's what happens. That's why your grant bites us in the rear.
Yeah, but you'll be collecting more taxes.
No, sir.
As the value goes up.
No, sir. That's what, that's what they're trying, and that's why they're prohibiting what they're prohibiting. That's because that's what other large entities and large counties do, like Harris County, where they have these great massive building projects and big neighborhoods go in, and their portfolio goes up by billions of dollars, and then they say, well, we didn't raise our tax rate. Well, but they raised the amount of taxes they collected, and that's what they're, that's what they're after, and they're going to catch us in that same net. So that's why I've got to protect us, and that's why I'm recommending the penny.
And where the court's going to be careful on down the road is, Ben Court's probably going to get his way this year with 4%, Abbott's going over 2.5%, so 4% for us is what, like a penny's 1.6?
I mean, you can...
It's not quite two pennies. So if he gets his way and they pass it next year, then the 2020 folks, I mean, we'll be limbed in no matter what we do.
And then what you're talking about, what you're trying to pass is you won't be able to raise your taxes high enough.
Yes, exactly. Without an automatic, and it's not even, you don't even have to do the petition.
Have to wait for the election.
Yeah, you won't even have to get to do the petition anymore. It'll be an automatic, well, we have to hold the rollback election, and we have to pay for that election no matter what.
Trying to sell pictures of me in spandex would be easier than probably selling a rollback election, okay? So...
Boy, you know how to change a mood.
Well, trying to make a plan here.
You just threw out a bad picture.
Ain't going to get rid of that for hours. But anyhow, back to the problem at hand, is our boys in Austin not doing us any favors.
So I, you know, I wanted to give you guys to let you know that, you know, I'm recommending the penny, and even at a penny, look what that increases, 220,000. And even the penny does not replace what we're going to stomach as a reduction, you know, from just the values. It just helps sustain us, and it keeps our levy at that 10 million plus where we need to be.
Where does that put us in comparison with all the other rates in the state?
We are, we are pretty low.
I think there's about 25, 254 that's below us right now.
If you can't really go by right, because of the value of land.
Well, and some, right, and a lot of counties will have two or three different tax rates. They'll have, they'll separate their road and bridge rate out from their other county government rate and things.
Moski County's rates higher now, I think, but their value of the land's not compared to ours, so it's the value.
You know, we are, you know, one of the things I watch every year when the report comes out from the appraisal district is I love seeing, it's going to be kind of hard to see, let me see if I can increase it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know what he's trying to see.
I'm sorry.
The screen?
New, you know, when we talk about new improvements here, you know, look at this number, you know, we've, we've had $2 million in new improvements this year coming to the county. New non-homestead land, $90,000 where it was taken off of, the new non-home site numbers is, is really a good number, plus the new homesite land where it's coming out of Ag. Those are some good numbers there. So we're seeing some new activity year in, year out that we have. In fact, you took, you take the new homesite and the new non-home site, you know, we've got about $16 million of improvements here that are coming on the roll this year.
And some will have inventory associated with it.
Now, right, now, you know, the judge's new place, that's 10 million of it.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's really good, but...
That'll kick back.
But yeah, I mean, you know, we've watched this, and this, you know, what this represents is a, is a couple of things for us as a, as a body. Number one, you know, this is, this is new improvements obviously coming in, and this does not even take into account tractor supply because they were not open January 1 and those type of things. But as we do more and more improvements in the industrial part, things get online out there. there, but these represent more systems coming through the area, we're going to want more services and, you know, registered vehicles, I mean, there, there's a, there's a cascading effect utilizing the court systems, you know, all of those things.
We lost 200 million on the power plant, which will regain some of that next January 1, hopefully.
You know, a couple of things that have got me encouraged is that this president sent an order to the Department of Energy ceasing and stopping all new, or any plants, nuclear and coal shutdowns in the United States. And the second part of that presidential order was a directive to energy companies, they must purchase energy from nuclear power plants. So, hey, I'm all for it. We have been seeing some small upticks in the wholesale energy prices. Oncore, excuse me, ERCOT is projecting a shortage of energy this summer, which you know, when the shortage happens, that's when those price per kilowatt hour go through the roof, and we base our value on that average kilowatt price over the course of a year. So, you know, the more days with those high ticks...
Well, it ought to happen this summer.
So, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that, unfortunately, it's not going to help us in this budget.
Not this year. 1920 might be better.
You recommend a penny.
That's my recommendation.
But that doesn't even recapture the loss.
That's correct. If in order to recapture the loss, you'd be looking at...
But we haven't figured in a coal or anything on this spreadsheet.
That's correct. But, you know, just real live numbers, okay, I've got you a $13 million budget where we are right now. Obviously, it's going to go down. However, you know, tax is the largest funding source of that budget. We have other revenue lines, but those other revenue lines combined are about 1.5 billion. So, you know, I mean, you know, it's real, it's real easy to see that, you know, I'm sitting at about 12 maybe in total income, and budget's 13, so we've got a lot of shaving to do, and there's a lot of gap to make.
Even with the one.
Even with the one. Yes, sir. So, again, we, we've, we've got time before we have to post our proposed rate for public consumption, but I wanted to lay it out there so that each one of you could start getting your arms around that, and let's walk it through.
I'm staying on emergency business, send back here so much we can do. Sorry. I really have as far as poor concrete or as far as 55,000 back. All they've done is the office that they put in, the fence they put up, and the manner of talk.
I know, it's just adding many other progress.
I think they have finished their fight with the city, I hope. I think that is done.
And we've been back channeling to get that CD raised.
Yeah.
We can get that back.
Get our 55,000 back. That's still in my bottom drawer, if you ever need the receipt, that hand side, bottom drawer. I've got a long empty of questions, though, that's all right.
You need me to give them here and get these papers out before the end of the year?
Every now and then, we first. Get them on tax rolls January the first time with you.
And as far as, you know, as you well know, I think us and possibly the water district, if I'm not mistaken, were the only two entities that did not have a tax increase last year.
You may have been the only one.
The city, the city did, a city did a Beckencourt, they had an increase in values and kept their rate the same.
I believe the water went down a tad.
But I know the hospital went up significantly, the school went up, and, and the city had a debt tax increase because of the, their effective rate went down.
State's always leaning on the school to go up more and more and more.
Yeah, the, the state's not going to let our school district alone until they're north of a dollar. They, they're really burnt because ours is, is south of that number. But I know as you talk with other commissioners, I mean, there are commissioners that are the counties, you know, really struggling, some are bumping up against the 80 cent statutory limit. So, I still feel very fortunate where we are to be talking about in the 40s, although we're approaching that 50 cent number, we're still, we've still got to bring away from that, so.
Thank you, gentlemen up here looking to adjourn on you.
I, I know that that's a buzzkill, my last thing, so that's why I saved it for last, but, you know, you know, we, we've explored different things. One of the things I explored for the sheriff's office is possibly instead of cars, you know, we could do something like that and...
Alan's got his head buried in his hands back there.
Are they requesting that?
No, I, I've requested it, but, you know, they, I haven't got any takers yet, but I thought it was a good system. I mean, all in one.
Pretty good.
Seems like it. It's really small.
Or the bicycle.
Certainly would work for the SRO officers at high school and stuff, I would think, so, you know, but anyway, I was, I was dared to show it, so I did it.
I didn't think you'd do it.
I know.
I did.
We can talk about it, budget, I guess, I don't know, where the sheriff, the cameras over here at the sheriff's store, do you know anything about that? Or is that Dwayne, the chief?
Yeah, Dwayne has sent me a picture of one that we tried to get the city to, to put up. Chester and I was having those negotiations, as Chester left, so I guess I'll start over somebody else.
You know, and that would be in and of itself a significant line item, you know, if, if the county actually ticketed that, the city has, has indicated no desire to pursue those tickets, so we'll take them, you know.
You're talking about all the junk that gets dumped out in front that we pick up every morning?
I don't think it would take that many tickets before it would be flying all over Facebook and maybe the message would get out, but, you know, illegal dumping certainly does carry a pretty hefty fine.
Yeah, it dumped it somewhere else out in the county, probably, or you don't have a camera.
Anything else from any folks?
You need a motion?
I need a motion.
I made a motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
You have a second?
I have a second by dawn. We will, all in favor, that's five, four, zero against, 11:46 a.m. on June 11th, first budget workshop. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Eddie.
The first of your last one, Commissioner Curtis, and Commissioner...